Is it ready? Thank you. Minute call, this teleconference city council special regular meeting to order. It's Monday, June 1st, 2020, 6:00 PM. And I would like to ask everyone to stand for the pledge of allegiance while the flag is displayed on this Zoom. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic. Thank you, folks. Before we get started with the role tonight, I wonder if we might take just a moment of silence, given what's going on in our country right now. So many things in terms of civil unrest related to violence and racism. And just, I'd ask just 30 seconds or so, just for a time of remembrance of people who are in pain and our cities and the country overall. Thank you. The city clerk, please take the role.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Anderson.
Present.
Councilmember Questa.
Present.
Councilmember Russell.
Present.
Mayor of Pro Tem Sierra.
Present.
Councilmember Stone.
Present.
Councilmember Wink.
Member Wink, you're muted.
Present.
Thank you. Mayor Olson.
Present.
All seven present.
Thank you. Tonight, our first item is our study session item. And this is for A, and Police Chief John Collins is here to present and discuss instituting body worn cameras within the police department. Thank you, Chief Collins, for being with us tonight.
Evening, Mayor, and members of council. I am unable to activate my camera, as the host is blocking me out, but that's fine. If I may indulge, as the council's indulgence, for a few comments that I have to make in regards to what's been going on here recently in our state and our country. And so, please bear with me, if I may. There are certain topics that I'd like to talk about. And because these are topics of what has been transpiring and what people are questioning of law enforcement officers and agencies throughout the country. And I want to bring them to you here right now. You know, we talk about training. And for me, you know, we have to be present, you know, we have to be current, if you will, with all the practices that law enforcement is challenged with, to be up to date on those. And as a member of the Colorado Post Board, I just completed my two and a half terms with them. And there are mandates that are issued by the Colorado Post in regards to training requirements that all law enforcement agencies in the state are required to do. And the ones that they require are proper holds and restraints, de-escalation training, anti-bias training, community policing, community partnerships. We've built upon that. Our officers have been schooled in the challenges to 21st century policing. How can the community and police do community policing together? Biased minds, multicultural communities, tragedies and image problems. How does the past haunt the present? And philosophy, the six pillars of community policing, to name a few. Accordingly, we go beyond the post mandate. What we train our officers in are the proper holds and restraints to include escorts, takedowns while encountering de-escalation techniques, handcuffing from the prone kneeling and standing position, movement to a seated position and then to a standing position, all the while while maintaining proper control of the suspect. We also do scenario-based training to include lethal force while utilizing verbalization skills and de-escalation techniques. Our officers are also trained in excited delirium, which is often confused with violent behavior in individuals. Secondly, we've begun our move towards restorative justice. And what I'll say simply there is that the community needs a bigger role in the criminal justice process. It's not there right now. And I believe that's what restorative justice will do for us as well. And then finally, our hiring practices. From the moment I took over this role as police chief, it was, and many of you have already heard this before, but the days of the good old boys are over. And they have been, as far as I'm concerned, with the operation and management of my organization. I believe in diversity, and I believe in hiring those folks who show a passion for the career that they're seeking, but also are compassionate to the folks that they'll be serving. And, you know, women in supervisory positions, I finally got there. And then Bobby Garrett retired on me. And so, that is my challenge, though, you know, throughout, is that we have to continue to become a more diverse organization. But the problem I'm having is that, and you probably will guess it, is that most folks right now don't want to be in law enforcement. And, you know, that's a tough situation for us, but there's always a needle in the haystack. We used to get well over 100 applicants for police jobs. Now we're seeing folks coming in the door for interviews, maybe 10, if at best. But we look for the best in that group, and I guarantee you, I will never, ever select somebody who is less than qualified and who does not exhibit the compassion that I have for the community that we serve. Thank you. I'm glad you allowed me to say that. I had to get that off my chest. Now, any questions?
Thank you, Chief. Are there any questions for Chief Collins? It looks like Member Stone.
Yes, sir.
Thanks for your statements. I really appreciate it. I had spoken with, I think, one of your watch commanders, possibly, during my Citizen Academy experience. And I had asked them about the process, like specifically the background process and things like that. And, you know, what happens if somebody is leaving another police force to try and come to our police force? What do we look into? Could you speak to that a little bit? Because I felt pretty satisfied when I got the explanation myself, and that might be helpful.
Let me start with any and all applicants. What we do is we go beyond what the norm would be. If you tell me that your current address is in La Jolla, Colorado, then my people are coming to La Jolla, Colorado to check in with your neighbors and folks down there to confirm the information that you give us. We also, we will pursue lateral candidates. And I will tell you that I always look at those. There are certainly many qualified folks that want to come to our agency. And, but there were also folks that are coming because they were less than stellar from those organizations they serve. We all recognize that in our building. And we do take the time to take care and to figure out exactly what these folks are up to. I will tell you that even though I may be desperate for a position to be filled, I will never accept anything less than a stellar candidate. And if there's a red flag, then my red flags go up and more, and then I pass on them. So I hope that answers your question.
Yeah, I think it goes a long way towards it. If I could just take another few moments. Let me put a scenario to you. Somebody applies to be an Inglewood police officer, and they worked in another state, and they're currently on administrative leave. And they're looking for other states to work in to become a police officer. What do we do in that situation?
Well, generally, these individuals have to, well, the first thing is a red flag. And then generally, they have to sign a waiver for us to access those files to find out exactly why they're on administrative leave. And, you know, everybody deserves the right to due process. But generally, the nature of those, we really scrutinize those. And if I have a concern about anything about that person's background or if not getting all the information on that, why that person's on that type of leave, I don't touch them. I just won't touch them. And, you know, I tell the staff, and it sounds kind of corny, but when I have doubts, and I'm thinking about trying to hire this person, and I'm thinking, what will they do to put me on TV? And that's what, that's, it sounds silly, but it's a high standard because you want your folks to behave, you know, professionally and with compassion. And if it's one bad person that can take you right off of that level of excellent performance and bring you right down to where you have to start all over again, that's how much damage one bad employee can do.
Awesome, thank you. I appreciate it.
Right, I don't see any other hands up. Thank you, Chief, if you want to continue on to the agenda item then.
Sure. The question that we're dealing with here now is, and I believe Mark McKay's here as well. And I guess I will assume that most of you have read this memo. And let me be the first to tell you that we are long overdue for body worn cameras. I don't believe there's a member in my organization that wouldn't embrace the practice of wearing those. And you look at it from a two-pronged approach. I'm very proud of what my folks do day in and day out. And a body worn camera would prove that day in and day out. But secondly, it provides some reinforcement to the community that we are holding ourselves accountable as well. And so, with that program, I'm not sure, Mayor, how far you want me to take this, but there are certainly pros and cons as to, you know, how these programs will benefit you. And if you would allow me to, and Mark McKay was the author of this memo, and he can chime in, you know, as well. But, and I won't read it from the entire list, but I think it's important for the community here as well, that one of the pros is that we're able to add evidence to the case after the data is uploaded. And I'm trying to look at my notes here.
You have quite a few pros here.
Yeah, and I think.
The ones that you think are most important for us, and then.
That's what I did. We'll have the ability to view video footage in internal investigations such as officer complaints. It would increase the public perception of departmental transparency. It would hold officers accountable for their actions. It's on film. And finally, you know, one of the pros that I underlined was the easy connectivity to the DA's office for criminal prosecution. Now, the cons, and it jumps right out at you. You know, the financial cost to committed to support this program is long-term, and it's expensive. And, you know, if need be, I will ask Mark McKay to, he contacted one or so of the major vendors as to, you know, how we get to these prices. We'd also have to hire, Mark included three full-time employees to manage and support the program. I would say at least no less than two. And the reason being is, and this brings us back to why I hired another records person. And that's because we are having so many requests from the courts, from the public defender, as well as the district attorney's office, that they, these individuals will be pulling data on a daily basis. The cost to purchase new equipment is a recurring cost. I guarantee you, when you buy this type of equipment, especially with, like tasers, every three years or so, we are told, well, that's no longer, you know, you know, a top-quality piece of equipment. Now you have to replace it with the next version. And that's where they will get you. There's new and improved technology is surpassing current equipment. And again, that falls within what I just mentioned. Commitment of staff resources from the IT department would be considerable, as well as staff resources from the city attorney's office. One of the things, one of the drawbacks of a camera is that folks seem to think that it could be the end-all. But it captures specific details of the body worn camera, and it may not represent the totality of the incident that that officer is involved in, basically saying that it just doesn't capture everything. And then the increasing data storage, you know, the increasing data storage costs annually. And so, I mean, I broke that down real, in a nutshell for you. It certainly has some great things that would, you know, help us within our management of how we do business. But there's a cost to it, and I think that's the biggest hurdle right now. And unless you have other questions of that memo, I think Mark McKay could probably jump in and answer those questions as well.
Why don't we start with those who have questions? Because I think the memo is very straightforward with lots of good detail. So we'll begin with Member Wink.
Thank you, Mayor. Thanks very much, Chief Collins, and thanks for taking the time to make a statement when I'm sure many of our constituents would definitely want to hear from you, given what's happening nationally. So thank you for your thoughtful words there. Great memo, as you said, Mayor Olson. It was very thorough and full of the appropriate level of detail. So I have two small questions, and I'll ask them, Mayor, according to your direction. The first question is actually for Attorney McCarney Brown.
Go ahead.
I'll give her a second to unmute, maybe. So regarding the management of access to data. So I think, let's say, we have these body cams. We have 80 or so for each of our officers. Got everything in place. We're collecting data. We're securing the data. The whole data governance piece is my biggest sort of piece of curiosity around these. But anyway, regarding access, what might your experience, Attorney Brown, be with legal support of police body cams? And if you have any support, what might be, do you have ideas behind best practice in terms of managing the abuse of access to this data?
Absolutely. And you're asking all the right questions. And I'm going to be very careful not to try to lay out policies or anything. As Chief Collins knows, and as the city manager knows, this is the first city I've worked in in 20 years that does not have body worn cameras. So my experience is with.
Someone's got their mute is not on. If you're not speaking, please mute.
So my experience is with departments that do have police cameras. However, there are two, there are policies that have to be developed and implemented. For example, police officers typically don't run those the entire time they're out, but they turn them on when they're starting an interaction, and they turn them off when the interaction is over. So when they turn it on, they make a brief statement into the camera saying, this is the time it's starting, this is X. It's a very brief statement. Then the camera records. At the end of the interaction, they may give another very brief two-sentence statement. It typically is something about, I was or was not in a private residence. And just quick detail, depending on the manner of data storage, typically, there's a log that's kept of every time the camera's turned on, every time it's turned off, so that they can be accessed for court purposes quickly and for any other type of need quickly. There are security and safety issues that the police department is going to have to look at. These officers see us in all our stages of being. And there are a lot of times when that, it would be inappropriate to be available to the public to look at. We don't want to know what's going on in someone's home after 10 o'clock when, you know, children are running around in their jammies or their diapers, whatever. We don't want that published out on the internet. So there are very strict security rules, policies are going to have to be put in place that balance the rights of the public to know what's going on versus the rights of individuals to privacy. Typically, if something is happening out on the street, there is a very reduced to nonexistent expectation of privacy. But if it's happening in a home, it's increased. So all of those policy issues are things that will sit, that the police department and my office would sit down and work our way through to make sure that we came up with a policy that they could effectively carry out and that met the system, the recording system that the city chose. So it's kind of a detailed process, but it's very workable. And there are a lot of positives associated with it.
Wonderful. Thank you so much, Attorney Brown.
If I could add to that.
Yes.
When these first came out in Colorado, the body worn cameras, there was great debate amongst chiefs about which policy works best. And as the fact that we haven't, you know, jumped into it right away, those policies are out there now, whether it's with the International Association of Chiefs of Police. You know, a lot of these policies are, and they're solid, and they're good. And we would just have to figure out which ones work best for the city. And, but, and the city attorney is exactly right in everything else that she stated.
That's great. So we have a good amount of precedent and maybe a foundation of best practice in terms of policies for certain municipalities and.
Exactly.
Good guidelines for these. Thank you. Mayor, may I ask my other quick question? It's really. Thank you. Chief Collins, then, regarding the physical security of the data, I would certainly support the cloud as opposed to everything in the cloud, if possible, please. But I won't get into those weeds. But would we need to provision space beyond the 3615 Aladi Building and the Fox Street Building in order to store anything to support body cams? Would we need more physical space than we have in those two buildings?
Well, we better not. We have plenty of room. I can guarantee you that. We would figure out a place where to put them. And you know, I'll just say that, we have plenty of space to grow in that arena.
You're sure?
I'm sure.
Last, okay, very good. I mean, obviously, that function will be shared between the IT department and the police, but just curious to know how you're feeling there.
And I agree with the cloud as well. That's where most, if not all, agencies have gone.
Yep, good. Thank you so much. Thank you, Mayor.
Good questions. Next is Mayor Pro Tem Sierra.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Chief, for your statement earlier as well. I guess, Member Wink already asked the initial question of mine in terms of, just her initial question. I guess my question is, how do you come up with the data storage needed? Is that based off of continuously running the cameras throughout the entire shift of an officer? Or are we looking at just when an incident occurs, that when they turn on the cameras and turn it off after the conclusion of that, I guess, incident? Or just coming in contact with someone?
If I understand the question correctly, is how do we come up with the amount of storage that we'll need? Is that what you're saying, the data? And that is beyond the realm of my expertise. But if Mark McKay is on here, he has spoken to the vendors that provide the equipment and the storage. And I'm sure that information came from them as to what a comparable department of 80 people, how much data they would need to store.
Okay. And I guess I got a second question, if it's for Sergeant McKay or maybe even for Director Brocklander. But in terms of the, you know, obviously, we're going through the budget cycle now. And so, if this was something that we were looking to get added for the 2021 budget, you know, is there a difference in terms of what the implementation and the roadmap would be for the cloud solution versus the on-premise? Meaning, if we were to get it approved, can we get it up and running in 2021?
Well, I can speak to certain parts. I would defer to Director Brocklander on the implementation. There's a significant amount of training that needs to take place prior to the officers going out. We have to set in place the policies and procedures that govern the usage of that. And so, we're here in June. I'm not sure if we would launch that in early of 2021. I'm not sure if Mark McKay would know how long it would take to go from A to Z to get the research and the implementation, and how quickly that takes place. I, it wouldn't be fair for me to guess.
So should we have Sergeant McKay answer anything? He's unmuted, so go ahead. Well, he was, anyway. Go ahead, Mark.
Yeah, thank you. I agree with the chief. It's hard to predict the training, our training. To us, being IT on board, the attorney's office.
You might need to speak a little closer to your microphone. We're having a little break.
Can you hear me better now?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. I think it would be hard pressed to get it up and running by 2021, the first part of 2021, realistically. I don't think this is something we want to jump into without having everything, everything in place. And that's, a lot of it's legal and going with the core requests and. I'm just trying to think of the words for the ACLU. So we have, there's a lot of organizations out there that we have to consider. And like Chief said, there's a lot of best practices out there. We just have to take piecemeal that and see what applies to us and the best practice.
I appreciate that, Sergeant. Thank you very much. No, I understand that there are a lot of codependencies. So it's good to understand what those are and what the potential timing would be for something like this. So thank you.
And plus, true, if I may add, when these first came out, they were practically giving away the product, you know, the cameras, knowing full well that the storage is what you were going to pay for. You know, there's a price tag that Mark included in both of those situations. However, I think that's where our ability to barter, if you will, if somebody wants our business, and I would expect a break in regards to their product. And chances are, I would say, we would probably be successful in reducing that piece of the purchase, or the lease, if you will, so.
Thank you. Mayor, we're actually, next one up is Councilmember Questa.
Thank you, Mayor. I guess the first question would go to Chief Collins. And Chief Collins, in the training, let me get my notes up here. In the training that was mentioned, it was 10 to 15 hours per week during implementation for each department, and then ongoing five to eight hours per week per department. How many departments would be involved in that? Where would take the additional five to eight hours per week?
You were kind of, it was hard to understand what your question, so if you could ask that one more time?
Yes, sir. So in the synopsis we were giving, and I'm reading it verbatim here, minimum time obligation from each department would be 10 to 15 hours per week for implementation and training, and then along with five to eight hours per week on an ongoing basis. And how many departments would be contributing that five to eight hours per week on the ongoing basis?
You know, Mark, I would have to defer to you, Mark.
Thank you. That's a good question. Specifically, that was addressed to our IT department and our legal team with the city attorney's office to implement that, those procedures and best practices. The police officers would have to go through quite a bit more training in the implementation stage of it, and also uploading the data, redaction software with the technicians that would be required. So that did not include the police officer's training.
Okay.
Specific to IT and the legal team.
Understood. So if I'm understanding correctly, Mr. McKay, those ongoing five to eight hours per week before IT and legal?
Yes, sir.
Very good. Thank you. And if I can swing back to City Attorney McKinney Brown, I've got a couple of questions that I tie in with what Councilmember Wink was asking. Mine do go to Cora, and I did my best to kind of research this a little bit over the weekend. And as you and both Chief Collins mentioned, it's a new subject in the big scheme of things. Case law seems to be building up on, on what can and cannot be done. It still seems to be governed by Cora, which is of course a state law. And so one of the things that I seem to pop up over and over again is that folks that are in the videos would be much more likely to have access to them through Cora. Whereas if it's just my neighbor, I want to know what happened at my neighbor's place, I might not have access to it. You mentioned that the city would get together and city staff would together policies, I assume, pulling from what's allowed at the state. Would folks know in advance of us voting on this, what those policies would be? If I had a citizen call me and say, I, I appreciate body cams. I think that they're a very useful tool. But if I get stopped on the side of the road, you tell me with certainty or not that my neighbor can or cannot accord that.
If city council decides that they want to pursue body cams and they would like, they would like staff to develop and bring forward the policy that, that staff would follow in, in making the recordings, we can certainly do that. A lot of the questions that you're, a lot of the question comes down to, it's, it was going to take, it would take me some time to go through and break down the different types of legal issues. For example, if it is a, if it, if it is a document that we could turn over in paper, then most of the time we could turn that over in video as well. But that's most of the time because again, if there is something within that recording that would violate someone's, some privacy, which typically is events that happen inside homes, then those types of things are not generally made available. So we could, we could bring that information back to you as a broad general overview. The other thing is, I've been asked a couple of times, what is the record retention on this? And that's set by the Colorado Municipal Records Retention Act, which the city council adopted 10 years ago. And if these videos, if, if they become evidence, then they're retained for the term of evidence of the offense. So if it's a misdemeanor offense, it's retained for three years. If it is a homicide, it's retained forever. So there are lots of pieces to, to make, to answering the question about can someone just go in and get it? First, is it even there? Has it been retained? Was it evidence? I don't know. I've kind of thrown a lot of information at you.
So I guess circling back to that, then would the expectation be at the time that council takes the vote on moving forward with body cams or not, the city would have policies in place or those policies would be determined after we vote on the cameras?
City council has the authority to direct staff to have those available in advance so that the public has a broader understanding. So if, if that's information that you want available, staff will do whatever it takes to get the information back to council. And the information about whether or not someone being pulled over for a traffic stop is immediately available versus whether or not somebody's home has been broken into and will we see the video from that? We can also get that information back to you. I need a little bit of time to pull it out of the different cases and kind of things, but we can get that back to you pretty quickly.
Sure. Good. Thank you, City Attorney. Thank you, Chief Collins. Mayor.
Welcome.
All right, my member Russell is next and then Member Anderson.
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you, Chief Collins, for your comments at the beginning because I do believe this has come up at a very timely time. I mean, when we put this on the agenda, none of this was on anybody's radar. And I just, I thank you for that. And I thank you for the answers to the questions thus far. The, the question that I have, and you may be able to answer this, Chief Collins, or somebody else may need to, is there still bond premium money available that could be used for some of the expenses? I mean, I understand some of this is going to be ongoing expenses, but maybe some of the initial expenses could be covered with bond premium money?
From a novice's standpoint, which is, which is I, I would say yes. And the reason being is because the bond money was intended for police law enforcement purposes. I think the only prohibition would be the hiring of, of employees and funded with a bond premium. But the, you know, we've, we've already purchased an RMS system. And this would, this would be exactly the same case. So that's, that's a very good question and, and I'm pretty certain of the answer that I just gave you.
Okay. Thank you very much. That's really all I have right now, Mayor. Thank you.
Member Anderson.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Chief Collins. My question goes to the cost idea as well. Is there, I know with a number of the different systems that the, the police contracts with, there are multiple municipalities or organizations that are chipping into, to bargain for different, different things like that. Are there, is there any possibility of doing this? I don't know what other municipalities are looking at this or already have body worn cams and maybe similar size to Inglewood, but is it possible that we could get a better price by collaborating with some of the other municipalities around us possibly to use a similar system to reduce the cost a little bit?
Which is a great question because that's what we've done with the RMS and, and the CAT systems are shared. Those are shared programs. I am not aware and Mark may correct me if you will, of any agencies that have gone in together for the purchase of, of a, a shared body worn camera program. Just off the top of my head, I, I could first see some issues in regards to, you know, the retention and where. There's just a lot of questions I have. And, and like I said, I have not heard of anybody doing that, that type of a sharing program. I could see where it would benefit us, but I could also see where having two agencies come together and try to figure out how to deal with all the different issues that go on with a program like that. I'm just not sure that anybody's ventured down that path. So.
Okay, that's, that's fair.
We can, we can find out for you.
Yeah, I'd appreciate that. Thank you.
Will do.
Thank you, Mayor.
Great. I, I think, Chief, one of the questions would be whether equipment could be bought together just en masse and that's probably where we could get some kind of savings, but not doing the rest of it together. So that might be something to explore. That would be my question too.
Yes, I, that would be part of the, our process.
Yeah. Member Wink?
Thanks, Mayor. I just want to say finally, you know, working toward comprehensive security and rules of law within our city, we need, one, effective systems to deter crime. Two, proactive corruption prevention. Three, competent policing. Four, accessible criminal and civil justice. I mean, this is from one point of view, right? And body worn cameras help with all four. I think now more than ever, as the chief mentioned before, and as we know from our diligence these days, it's important to provide protection and support for the majority of police officers who actually comport themselves to the letter of the law and with human dignity as well as bring light to those who do not. I think as council, we have a duty to protect our good officers and expose those whose actions warrant external review. These body cams, in my view, are proven benefits municipalities all around the country. So I believe that if we can at all afford them, we should procure them. And I, I maybe even like citizen input on this matter, maybe given the cost. But for the future, if at all possible to, to pay for these, I'm definitely in favor of them.
Thank you. I think I'll go through the group at this point, if there aren't any other questions to find out whether you want to move this forward. I'll start by saying that this is the third time this has come before councils that, since I've been on. And it's always been a financial reason, for the most part, that we have said no. I think now is the time to bite the bullet and figure it out, use some of the bond, figure out some other ways to do it. I, I, many cities do it with much smaller forces even. And I think it's time to provide that kind of protection for our police and our citizens overall and just for a higher level of professionalism for the whole policing process. So that would be my perspective. Mayor Portem Sierra, you're next.
Thank you, Mayor. I agree. I, I definitely believe that we should move forward with this. And I would state that we should look, look to this, to add this as part of the 2021 budget. I know we've given direction to staff on the 2021 budget, but this was not on it. But so I would like for staff to do additional work to see how we can get it in for the next year.
Thank you. Member Stone? Do you want to weigh in? I'm going to just go across my screen.
Yeah, I, I definitely am in support of this and in support of getting it on the 2021 budget. I think that we have a pretty unique police department. I've witnessed pretty high levels of compassion and professionalism that I did not experience during my time of having regular interactions with law enforcement as a teenager and in my early twenties. And I'm very appreciative of that difference. And I think that this will just go a really long way towards ensuring, number one, that the community can see that and also that it stays that way. So, thank you.
Thank you. Member Russell?
I agree. I, I would like to move forward with it for the reasons that have been shared already. And, and I think I also agree that we should move forward with putting some of it in the 2021 budget. But I think the timing for this is really good because we do have bond money that can underwrite, you know, probably a lot of the initial costs. So I'm for moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Member Anderson?
I'm, I'm in favor of moving forward with this and I really, just to make a comment on it, appreciated Member Wink's comments that this is not, this provides some accountability for the police department, but also provides a way to just make sure that, that we know to how to defend our police officers when accusations are brought. It works both directions. I think that's really important. So totally supportive of this. Let's move it forward. Thank you.
Member Questa?
Thank you. I do, I do like the concept and I agree that I, I don't even think this changes behavior of our police officers, but I think it gives them defense if there's an actually an accusation made. You need to show evidence in another direction. Now, I would be probably apprehensive about doing this without having any guidelines presented on how these records are kept, what citizens have access to, et cetera. It sounded like city attorney can maybe draft some things, at least give me an idea of what citizens can expect when they appear in one of these recordings and who would have access to that through Cora. So I would like to see some guidelines. And then secondarily, on the two approaches budget wise, I definitely support the cloud approach as well. And 2021 sounds great for that budget. Thank you, Mayor.
Great.
And one, one more final. I, I, everybody else, thank them. I have a deep base in the Inglewood Police Department and all our first responders. And I appreciate the work you do. These are very troubled times and it couldn't be more tense. COVID, this really doesn't help at all either. So I appreciate the work that you guys are doing and I know that these are, are, are tense, troubled times. And so, thank you, sir. Thank you, Mayor.
What I'd like to add is that we'll, we'll start with this tomorrow. Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Russell, I, you, you came up with a really good idea. And I'm going to jump on that. In the process, we'll, we'll establish some, some, some processes within the police department now to, to start finding these policies that we've all been discussing and, and to try to answer all the questions you, you folks have answered. Beginning with finance and IT and the city attorney. And so hopefully the next time we come back, we'll have a whole lot more information for you.
Mayor Portem Sierra still has a question, I believe.
Actually, no, I just want to make a comment in, in terms of just Member Questa's statement that I would like to see those guidelines in front of council as part of a study session. So if, I'm not sure if we would be, if we were looking to get just that communication, but I think that that's something that we should discuss as part of a study session.
And I would imagine this would probably take several study sessions because there are so many different components of this program. But we'll be, we'll begin, begin our due diligence tomorrow.
Great. Thank you. And, and then it'll be part of the budget where we'll get to vote on it as well. So appreciate that. Thanks for all your work on that.
Well, thank you.
Our next item is agenda item five, which are the consideration of minutes of previous sessions. And so 5A, are there any corrections made to the minutes of the special city council meeting of May 18th? Oh, Mayor Portem, did you have your hand up just?
That was from the previous one.
Okay. Seeing no corrections, could I have a motion to approve?
I move to approve the minutes of the special city council meeting of May 18th.
Thank you, Mayor Portem. Could I have a second?
Wink seconds.
Thank you. Please vote. I have a roll call.
Member Anderson?
Aye.
Member Questa?
Aye.
Member Russell?
Aye.
Mayor Portem Sierra?
Aye.
Member Stone?
Aye.
Member Wink?
Aye.
Mayor Olson?
Aye.
Let the record show seven aces.
Thank you. The next item is 5B. This is, are there any corrections on the minutes from May 20th, 2020? Seeing none, could I have a motion?
I move to approve the minutes of the special emergency city council meeting of May 20th.
Have a second?
Wink seconds.
Thank you. Please vote.
Member Anderson?
Aye.
Member Questa?
Aye.
Member Russell?
Aye.
Mayor Portem Sierra?
Aye.
Member Stone?
Aye.
Member Wink?
Aye.
Mayor Olson?
Aye.
Let the record show seven aces.
Thank you. And the last one is 5C. These are the minutes for special meeting of May 26th. Any corrections there? Seeing none, could I have a motion to approve?
I move to approve the minutes of the special, special study session meeting of May 26th.
Thank you. Can I have a second?
Wink second.
Thank you, Member Wink. Please vote.
Member Anderson?
Aye.
Member Questa?
Aye.
Member Russell?
Aye.
Mayor Portem Sierra?
Aye.
Member Stone?
Aye.
Member Wink?
Aye.
Mayor Olson?
Aye.
Let the record show seven aces.
Thank you. The next one is agenda item six. And tonight we have recognition of, of our parks and Director Parks Recreation Library. I mean, I'm sorry, of our library. And Christina Underhill is here to present and recognize. And I believe you have some people lined up tonight.
I do. Hi, Mayor and Council. Good evening. Am I muted? Are we good?
No, you're fine.
Okay, okay. First of all, it's good to see everybody. We're excited to be here tonight. We wish we had it in different terms. We had a big party planned and flash mob and all that good stuff. But unfortunately, we're going to do it virtually, which is our new life for both the libraries and parks and recreation in many ways. But today, June 1st, 2020, in the midst of the pandemic, we're super excited to be celebrating the Inglewood Library's 100th year. Over the last 100 years, there have been amazing staff and patrons that have helped to shape our library to what it is today. And I'm extremely excited to introduce our newest staff member, our library and cultural arts manager, Mark Mullis, who is going to give you an overview of the activities we have planned on, as well as after that, we'll show you a short history video so the public can see it too, if they haven't already, of the library, which Communications Division put together for us. So Mark, take it away and share what we have going on in the library.
Hey, Kristen, and, and thank you, Council, for having me here. First, when you have time, I'd encourage you to swing by the library's Facebook page where just today we posted a video with some birthday greetings we received from the community. Really cute stuff, a lot of, you know, cute kids. We've got submissions from, it was community, former staff and others. I think you'll enjoy it. And I wanted to say thank you to everyone who offered submissions for that. And then second, as of today, we've started giving away special 100th anniversary book bags to people who are coming to do curbside pickups of library materials. Like, like Christina said, our, our options for what we could do to celebrate in person were somewhat limited. Like, like Christina said, our, our, our options for what we could do to celebrate in person were somewhat limited, but this is something that I think was generating a lot of positivity among the community today as we were handing out library materials. Uh, we also pulled aside a number of those book bags for staff and city council. So hopefully we'll find a way to get those to you soon. Finally, the library staff have a few programs planned for the coming months that we wanted to share with you all. Uh, obviously, uh, the timing of these is going to be contingent on when we're able to have in-person programs again. But just talking about those briefly, um, in July, we're planning to have an event with the Historical Preservation Society, uh, the history of the library and key events in the city's history, that sort of thing. Uh, the nice about that one is it can be, it can be done virtually, um, if, if circumstances still require us to do so. In August, we're going to have a, in Handen Hall, a silent movie night, uh, or a silent movie event, rather. Uh, we'll show, uh, short silent movies from the 1920s, uh, kind of sticking with that theme. We're looking into having a live pianist play, uh, along with movies. We'll be selling old, old timey candy and popcorn and that sort of thing. And then in September, uh, the staff are planning to have a 1920s themed gala. Um, this would be an after hours event with advanced ticket sales. Um, we want to make sure it's family friendly. The, you know, proper party planning with live entertainment, food, non-alcoholic refreshments. Uh, and again, sticking to that 1920s theme. Uh, the gala, uh, would, would, would include some fundraising activities, um, including, uh, silent auction, uh, donation drive, um, as the tickets sells themselves. Uh, and then in addition to that, uh, there's another fundraiser, which is when we reopen to the public, we have, um, special 100th birthday stickers that can be added to the library cards, uh, which we'll be selling for $1.50, which is the same cost as the original donation that to the foundation that helped to create the library in the first place. Which you'll hear about in the video momentarily. And so all those fundraising efforts are going towards, um, repairing and putting a new wrap on the, um, book drops that you see outside the Civic Center building. Um, they're, they're beige and a little bit rundown looking right now. It'd be nice to get those, to get the rust cleaned up, um, and then get those looking really nice. So we'll have, uh, hopefully more, uh, more news about that as, as the fundraising moves forward. So with all that said, uh, we'd like to show you the short video put together by the communications team about the history of Inglewood Library, uh, as soon as that's ready.
Thank you and welcome to Inglewood.
Thank you.
The City of Inglewood presents Inglewood Moments in History. The Inglewood Public Library. The Inglewood Public Library has a humble and heartbreaking history. In fact, it got its start with just a dollar and 50 cents and a promise to a young girl named Annabelle Spencer, who was tragically killed just before the eruption of World War One. Shortly after her death, her mother used the child's life savings and donated the small sum to begin a foundation for an Inglewood library. On May 14th, 1920, an association library was founded and began serving the public with a scant 20 books on hand. A small room is rented in a former mortuary on South Broadway. It was owned by J.C. Jones, Inglewood's first mayor. Public donations were collected to cover the $35 a month rent. By 1921, the Inglewood City Council voted to pay $100 a month to cover operating expenses. Patrons could check out one book for two weeks. If they failed to return the books, overdue fines would cost them two cents per day. As the library's collection of books grew, it soon overwhelmed the small space. And in 1929, the library moved into the new Chrysler Building on South Broadway. The same building that housed a brand new J.C. Pennington. The new space had enough shelves to fit 7,000 books. A series of moves followed, including a rented room in what was originally part of the Tilleries and later the Alexander Film Company. In 1951, the Inglewood City Hall and Library was established on South Bannock. Books were regularly checked out by over 6,000 cardholders. Eventually, some books were put on wheels. The Roadrunner Bookmobile took off in the 60s and proved to be a popular staple of the community for nearly 30 years. It was replaced in 1991 by a colorful new bookmobile named the Rainbow Express. Today, the beloved library has a home in part of what was the former Cinderella City Mall. An enormous shopping plaza that sat where the present day Inglewood Civic Center does today. 2020 marks 100 years of operation and the library now boasts the biggest staff and largest collection of books, magazines, and videos to date. And it all happened right here in what we call Inglewood, Colorado.
Thank you. I don't know why, but it feels like Doug Coan should be on when we're doing these videos. So any further comments from the two of you?
No, we're just super excited to be a part of this 100th year. It's, it's very historical in many different ways. Um, as we make this turn to the virtual new library, um, as we move forward through the pandemic, but we're excited for this and Mayor, I'd be happy to turn it over to you to read the proclamation.
All right. Uh, Council, I'm going to read the proclamation and then I'll take a motion to approve and then we'll vote. So this is a proclamation celebrating the 100th anniversary of the Inglewood Public Library. Whereas the Inglewood Public Library traces its history to the tragic story of Annadelle Spencer, a small child who was killed prior to World War One, when her mother took the girl's life savings of $1.50 and donated it to the foundation to a library. And whereas the Inglewood Public Library opened its doors, uh, to the public on June 1st, 1920, when the first librarian and custodian assumed her duties. And whereas the Inglewood Public Library has been supported by the City of Inglewood since 1921, when the city council agreed to pay $100 per month in support of the library. And whereas from these modest beginnings, the library grew with the community, moving to the Chrysler Building in 1929, moving with City Hall in 1934, 1951, and 1965, and finally in 2000 into the Inglewood Civic Center. And whereas the Inglewood Public Library now serves over 26,000 patrons and holds a collection of over 70,000 items, as well as a broad range of digital resources. And whereas the Inglewood Public Library's value to the community goes beyond its collection of materials, serving as a center of learning and recreation through programs and classes for families, children, seniors, students, job seekers, and other intellectually curious. And whereas the Inglewood Public Library will celebrate its 100th anniversary on June 1, June 1st, 2020, now therefore be it proclaimed that the Inglewood City Council does hereby proclaim Jan, June 1st, 2020 as a day to celebrate the 100th anniversary of Inglewood Public Library, given under my hand and seal this first day of June 2020. Could I have a motion to approve this proclamation?
I move to approve the proclamation of Inglewood Library's 100th anniversary.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Could I have a second?
I'd like to second.
Thank you, Member Stone. Could we have the clerk please take the roll for vote? Well, actually, she got, do you want, are there any comments anybody wants to make first? This will be your time to, to celebrate a little bit. So any comments any of you want to make? I know, Member Russell and I probably took our kids, we're probably the oldest here that have had, I'm sorry, I'm outing us both, but we probably had more kids, uh, using that first, um, uh, little bookmobile. I remember that Roadrunner on it. My kids loved it.
Actually, Mayor, I would just like to say that, um, I remember the Roadrunner myself when I was little. So, um, anyway, I go back farther than a lot of you. Thank you. I, I appreciate this and, uh, it's great to be here 100 years. Um, so anyway, thank you very much.
Great. Anybody else who'd like to say anything? Right. It's a wonderful day to celebrate and we will continue the celebrations as planned. Thanks for putting all these multiple things together. It's a whole year celebration we can, we can do on this one. I'm looking forward to seeing those book bags. All right, please vote.
Member Anderson?
Aye.
Member Questa?
Aye.
Member Russell?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Sierra?
Aye.
Member Stone?
Aye.
Member Wink?
Aye.
Mayor Olson?
Aye.
Let the record show seven aces.
Let the celebrations begin. All right. The next item is agenda item seven, and it's our, uh, recognition of scheduled public comment. We have no one that signed up for tonight, I believe. Is that correct? I don't have any.
Um, correct. Uh, but I do have an attendee, uh, that is in the queue. I don't know if it's for a public comment, but perhaps we should, uh, find out. That could be under unscheduled, yes.
So under recognition of unscheduled, this is agenda item eight. And I will read this a little bit here. Um, this is an opportunity for the public to address city council and there's an expectation that presentation will be conducted in a respectful manner. And council may ask questions for clarification, but there won't be any dialogue. Please limit your presentation to three minutes. Currently, we're not able to accommodate public presentations. However, there can be submitted packets to the, uh, city clerk by email. Is that person wanting to speak?
Let's see. Um, Matthew Schultz, are you here for public comment?
Hi, I am. Can you hear me?
Yes, I can. Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you. Yeah, I did sign up, uh, yesterday on the website, so hopefully I did it correctly, but, uh, thank you for having me. Well, no worries. Thank you for letting me speak, um, tonight. I wanted to take an opportunity. Oh, I'm Matthew Schultz. I'm from, uh, 4650 South Bannock Street. And I wanted to actually talk about body cameras and, um, and policing in Inglewood and just, uh, lend my voice in support of body cameras. Over the last week or more, I've been thinking about what tangible actions all of us can take and I'm really happy to see that the council is actually one step ahead of, ahead of the citizens and, uh, all the research I did to come speak to you tonight. A lot of my questions were actually answered by the presentation that Police Chief Collins gave. So I'm just here, Member Wink did, uh, mention she wanted to hear citizen input, so I'll be the first one to say I definitely support, uh, cameras. Studies out of California, Las Vegas show that, you know, body cameras have, uh, resulted in reduction in use of force cases and/or complaints from citizens. And I think it just does help protect both our police and our community members, whether they're from underrepresented backgrounds or not. I did find in my research, the National Conference of State Legislatures did say that Colorado is a state that has funding sources available for body camera usage. I didn't get much further than that, but I did want to include that in my presentation, if there are any options that we could take to explore getting funding from the state to help offset some of that initial cost. And I also really love, uh, Councilmember Russell's, uh, suggestion to, to use some of the existing bond money from, uh, the bonds that we passed to help build the new station. And one thing I really loved hearing Chief Collins speak about was the de-escalation trainings and other measures that our police currently take in the city. I will say while I was researching what it might, what I wanted to comment about this evening, it was actually pretty difficult to find information on the website. There is a frequently asked questions page for the police department. And on there, it's just general questions about, you know, how do I file a police report, things that are important. But I think especially given the current situation, it would be really helpful to have a response from the Inglewood Police Department somewhere that's easily accessible for citizens to understand all of the amazing trainings, de-escalation work, and things that Chief Collins spoke about. Uh, because if I had not been attending this session of, of city council, I may not actually know that. And I think that would go a very long way in helping our community understand, uh, what our police force is already doing to ensure the safety of all of our citizens. So again, uh, I, I'll shorten my remarks since a lot of, uh, a lot of what I wanted to talk about was covered this evening, but I just wanted to lend my voice in support as an ally and make sure we, uh, get body cams for the city.
Thank you, Mr. Schultz. I, I do have a, a question for you, if you don't mind.
Sure.
Um, what else would you like to see on the police website besides what you just mentioned? Is there anything else that you, as a citizen, would think, gosh, that'd be helpful to have? And if you can't think of anything right now, maybe send us an email too.
Sure. I can follow up with a more comprehensive email, but the questions that were on my mind this weekend were, do we have dash cams? Do we have body cams? Do we do de-escalation training? Is there a formal, um, use of force policy that our police officers, uh, agree to? Some of the questions that, uh, Mayor Protem asked about, uh, background, uh, checks on lateral moves from other police stations. I think that sort of information would be really helpful. But I'm happy to summarize any other things I can think of and send an email off. Those are just some things that I think would really be useful for folks to be able to, to easily find. In order to find, uh, this information, I needed to actually call the police, leave voicemails for Sergeant McGrath and others. And some of the information I still couldn't find on the website. So it would just be nice.
Thank you. That's really helpful. I look forward to your emails.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. I don't believe there's anybody else. Is there city clerk Carlisle?
No, there's not.
All right. So tonight, um, Member Stone is our responder as council member. So do you have any response to the public comment?
Yeah, I just wanted to thank, uh, Mr. Schultz for, for coming and, uh, supporting what we're looking to do with, with the body cams. I do think that's a great idea. To put up, uh, you know, maybe a section on the website that talks about the extensive training that EPD gets. Uh, because that is, uh, another conversation that I had with, uh, one of the commanders over at the station. That they, they really do go quite far above and beyond what is required by post-training. Um, in terms of the training that our, our police officers get, and I think that it does show. And, uh, and I appreciate the, uh, the intel on state funding sources. That's, that's great to know that we should be looking into that. And also the emphasis on de-escalation, which I think is a, a really important thing that we need to be constantly trying to increase our, our efforts to focus on de-escalation. So thank you, Mr. Schultz. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Member Stone. We're on to agenda item nine, which is our consent agenda items. Uh, are there any concerns for nine B one or two? Seeing none, could I have a, a motion to approve nine B one and two?
I move to approve nine B one, uh, and nine B two.
Now you can have a second.
I'll second that motion. Wink?
All right. Could you please vote?
Member Anderson?
Aye.
Member Questa?
Aye.
Member Russell?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Sierra?
Aye.
Member Stone?
Aye.
Member Wink?
Aye.
Mayor Olson?
Aye.
Let the record show seven aces.
Thank you. There are no public hearings tonight. Agenda item is 11A1 is, uh, CB 22 ordinance to submit a ballot issued to elections regarding CRS 29 dash 27 dash 101. And staff recommends city council approve this bill in action that would exempt Inglewood from state limitations on provision of broadband services. And our information technology director, Margaret Brocklander, is here to answer questions. Do you have any opening words? Otherwise, we'll just see if there's questions.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I think the only thing that I would like to add is that the May 18th study session, there was discussion that the language be included. Where the city be authorized but not obligated. And so therefore the first sentence of the ballot question does include be authorized, not obligated.
Thank you. And thank you for being so responsive to that input. Could I have a motion to approve 11A1?
I move to approve agenda item 11A1.
Have a second?
I'll second.
I think it's Member Stone?
Sure.
Any discussion? Seeing none, would the clerk please take the roll call for vote?
Yes. Member Anderson?
Aye.
Member Questa?
Aye.
Member Russell?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Sierra?
Aye.
Member Stone?
Aye.
Member Wink?
Aye.
Mayor Olson?
Aye.
Let the record show seven aces.
Thank you. It is passed. And the next is 11C1. Staff recommend city council approve, uh, there's a mistake here, by motion rather than resolution. A professional services agreement with CDM Smith and an amount not to exceed $107,258 to conduct a risk and resilience assessment and update the city's 2004 emergency response plan for critical water assets. Our deputy director of utilities, Steve Simon, and director of South Platte Water Renewal Partners and Utility, Peter Van Rye, are here to present and answer any questions.
Great. Thank you, Mayor and Council. Um, I appreciate you considering this item tonight. Uh, we, I have with me uh, on the Zoom call, our new deputy director of engineering for the utilities department, Steve Simon. Steve, uh, I'd like to actually introduce Steve to the council. Steve joins us from, um, Steve, I'd like to actually introduce Steve to the council. Steve joins us from Aurora Water, where he previously worked as the Planning Services Manager. So Steve has been with us for about six weeks and we're excited to have him on board. And this is one of the first projects that we've got him moving forward. So this project is essentially a regulatory requirement that came out of the America's Water Infrastructure Act, or AWIA is what it's referred to as. And essentially what it requires is all water systems that serve greater than thirty-three hundred people and population to do a risk and resiliency assessment and then update their corresponding emergency response plans. And so there's two critical regulatory deadlines as part of this requirement. One is December twenty, December thirty-first, twenty twenty is when we have to have the risk and resiliency assessment completed. And then by June thirtieth of twenty twenty-one, we have to have our ERPs updated and submitted to the EPA. And so we have engaged with a, we're recommending to engage with a consultant, CDM Smith, who was part of a number of consultants that proposed on the project. The review panel that reviewed all the submittals determined that CDM Smith provided the best response to the RFP for this submission. They've done a number of these same kinds of plans across the country for other water agencies, and they were on the lower end of the overall price. There were two consultants that proposed a lesser fee. However, the panel determined that the proposers were not as responsive as CDM and thereby wouldn't provide the best value to the city. So what we're requesting is the approval of a professional services agreement with CDM Smith in the amount of one hundred and seven thousand two hundred and fifty-eight dollars to complete this work for the AWIA requirements. I'm open for questions.
Thank you. Council, any questions? All right, seeing none, could I have a motion to approve?
I have a question.
Go ahead, Mayor Protam.
Yeah, so Director Van Rye, can you speak a little bit more about what type of risk is it that we're trying to evaluate here? Are we talking about physical assets? Are we talking about water quality? What exactly is the main scope of this project?
It's basically, it's an assessment of our plant and the associated risks that could impact our ability to produce drinking water quality water for our community. And so it's looking at infrastructure within the actual plant site as well as processes and basically all aspects of our treatment process in order to ensure that we're accounting for those risks and that we have an emergency response plan in place that is adequate to address those risks.
Okay. So Director, is there any overlap with the conversation that we had about a month ago in regards to just the Allen Treatment Plant and some of the risks that we saw there in terms of current capital, current equipment?
Yes, I think there is overlap. I think this helps to further, further identify and refine the risks that we are facing with the plant and then also providing that response plan update. But it also provides us additional information, additional intelligence as it relates to if we need additional, if we need additional infrastructure improvements to mitigate those risks. So I think these two dovetail very well together right now.
And Mayor, I guess I have one more question. If there's no other questions from?
Go ahead. Looks like no one else is asking anything. Could you please put your hand up if you have a question?
And then I guess just in terms of where this is coming from, would this be coming in out of the water fund or is this coming out of the general fund?
This comes out of the water fund. This is a Water Enterprise Fund project.
Perfect. Thank you, Director.
I don't see any other questions. So could I have a motion to approve?
I move to approve agenda item eleven C one, professional services agreement to prepare risk assessment for critical water assets.
Thank you, Member Wink. Could you have a second?
I'll second.
Give that to Mr. Anderson. Thank you, Member Anderson.
I actually didn't second. That was.
You must have done something because the bright.
I don't have any problem seconding it, but I did.
All right, any, Member Stone will be our second. And then any discussion? Seeing none, would the clerk please take vote?
Yes. Member Anderson?
Aye.
Member Questa?
Aye.
Member Russell?
Aye.
Mayor Protam Sierra?
Aye.
Member Stone?
Aye.
Member Wink?
Aye.
Mayor Olson?
Aye.
Let the record show seven ice.
Thank you. Next up is eleven C two. This is staff recommending city council approve by motion the execution of a pre-development agreement, PDA, between the city and EEF and SKB of Portland, Oregon, also known as Scanyon Kemper Bard. Our redevelopment manager, Dan Perumba, and senior planner, John Vobero, are here with us to answer questions. Would you gentlemen have anything you'd like to say to begin with before we ask questions?
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor Protam, Council, Dan Perumba here. We discussed this in quite a bit of detail with you all a month ago. We had an update on progress under the exclusive negotiating agreement with SKB. And in general, you may recall that we've had really excellent progress with them on all the tasks outlined in the ENA and really pleased with the relationship involving with them. So this is this preliminary development agreement, also referred to as a pre-development agreement, is the next step in the three agreements that have been contemplated. You may remember, this item was originally scheduled for council consideration a couple of weeks ago. At the May eighteenth meeting, we discovered at the last minute a typo in the agreement after it had been submitted to the council. So the decision was made by the city manager and city attorney to hold off until we could get that corrected, which we have done. That's now attached to your packet. And it was a relatively minor wording change that had related to prior language in the ENA. I won't go into it unless you're interested, but that's been corrected. Essentially, all of the tasks in the pre-development agreement carry the tasks that were outlined in the exclusive negotiating agreement to a higher level. The general concept is that by year end, essentially six months from the execution of this agreement, hopefully tomorrow, we would be back in front of council with the underlying redevelopment plan that's been developed in concert with the developer, SKB, as well as then the master development agreement. We hold hope that this could be done by year end. However, there could be some COVID-related timing impacts that could push this into the first quarter of next year. We do plan to brief council probably every two months during this process. And at least one of those meetings, maybe two, we would involve the city's special counsel, Sarah Rockwell from Kaplan-Kirshner Rockwell. Also, just remind council that the PDA with SKB has been approved by the EEF Board and the EEF Board also by motion approved, recommending the approval to council. Also mentioned that SKB has developed, in fact, a very comprehensive communication plan for public outreach and public input. It largely mirrors the communication plan that has been followed by the Downtown Matters Initiative, which has generated really a high level of input from the public. So we want to try to mirror that and get that level of input into the city center redevelopment process as well. And I think for all these reasons, staff solidly recommends approval by motion of this preliminary development agreement with SKB. Happy to address any questions.
Thank you, Director. Director, let's see. First up is Member Russell. I almost lost someone else's hand up there. Did someone take it down? Nope. Okay, go ahead, Member Russell.
Thank you, Mayor. And I just, I have a few questions. On page seven of the agreement, it talks about the valuation of property as is, that the price at which the master developer would acquire real property or developmental or development rights is calculated based on current value, providing the master developer the opportunity to resell at fully entitled and improved improvement values. So is the city going to sell the property to the master developer and then we will buy it back after? Or what does that mean?
I think it's one of probably three valuation approaches that'll be considered by the city and SKB over the next six months. And so there's a variety of approaches. This one would be one where the property is valued as is. And the SKB profit margin, if you will, results from them reselling the property based on its redevelopment potential and entitlements to one or more vertical developers. There's a couple of other approaches that'll be considered in detail as we go along. We'll probably zero in on these and discuss them with council and future progress meetings.
So we'll get more information on those as we get ready to make those decisions.
Absolutely.
And then I just, I have a question on page eight H. It talks about the parties working collaboratively on evaluating and pursuing a buyout or modification of the Selby property. Which is the Selby property?
The Selby property is the big parking lot north of the station, which the city currently leases from the Selby Trust beneficiaries, I should say. There's forty-five years left on that ground lease. And one of the things we'd like to do is figure out if there's an opportunity to buy out that ground lease to release some of the value to the city of that property.
Okay, thank you. I think that's all I have right now. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Are there any other questions? Seeing none, could I have a motion to approve the pre-development agreement with SKB?
I move to approve agenda item eleven C two, the pre-development agreement with SKB.
Thank you. Could I have a second?
I second.
That was Member Anderson, right?
It's time.
Thank you. Any further discussion? I need to be patient. I'll let you get those hands up. I don't see any. So would the city clerk please take the roll for vote?
Member Anderson?
Aye.
Member Questa?
Aye.
Member Russell?
Aye.
Mayor Protam Sierra?
Aye.
Member Stone?
Aye.
Member Wink?
Aye.
Mayor Olson?
Aye.
Let the record show seven ice.
Thank you. Our next agenda, I thank you, gentlemen, for presenting. Our next agenda item, yeah, is agenda item twelve is our COVID nineteen update by our city manager, Sean Lewis.
Thank you, Mayor. Can you hear me all right?
Yes.
Great. I'll go ahead and get started, as I always do, with a public health update. As of your report last Friday that we provided to you, the county is up to forty-three hundred forty-five total cases. And that is up from four thousand one hundred eighty-nine before that. Total deaths in the county are three hundred and five, which is a pretty significant jump from two hundred and fifty-four on Friday. In Inglewood, we are faring better. We have only gone up three cases over the weekend to one hundred and seventy-five total cases and have remained at thirty-eight deaths from COVID nineteen. Also, on the public health, I just wanted to point out that City Attorney McKinney Brown did inform council in an email earlier today about the new safer at home restrictions and specifically that those have been extended to July first. And so we are continuing to monitor, particularly with the help of City Attorney McKinney Brown, the new guidance that's coming out of the state and how that affects us. We do still plan on per that guidance of keeping vulnerable populations of our employees, allowing them to work from home as well as encouraging teleworking where possible. So not a lot of changes on what you're seeing at the city buildings. We're continuing on the guidance that we were on before unless more guidance comes out in the meantime. Regarding our recovery leadership and citizen involvement, I just wanted to report that the Rappahoe County Business Recovery Task Force, which both Brad Power and Darren Hollings were served on, they have been meeting and had a meeting actually this morning. And they have, that group has established a number of business reopening assistance efforts, webinars, a call center with staff five days a week. And a link to that website has been established on our website and that group continues to meet every two weeks. Moving on to regulatory relief and the outdoor business opportunities, I could pretty safely say that the majority of staff working in COVID nineteen arenas this last week have been squarely focused on getting this outdoor seating up and running. So we have had thirteen applications now. That's up a few from your report on Friday. Thirteen applications for expanded outdoor dining seating, those that have been received. Ten of those have already been approved and three are under review. The three that we've received since the last time that we spoke on Friday was four Gs. And we are requesting a site visit to finalize that one. And over the weekend, Brewability and Zomo also provided their application. And they are actually going to be primarily locating their expanded seating into the West Paseo. And as I mentioned before, the city is actually going to be setting up tables and chairs in the East Paseo. So those have been ordered from Ace Hardware. And the tables were delivered today. Our park staff has been busy assembling those. We're going to try to get those out to the East Paseo as soon as possible. Unfortunately, chairs are going to be replaced to probably later in the week if we're lucky. Finally, the last three items are more financial oriented. The Chairs Act, as you know, we are continuing to work with the county and today received a form, a preapproval form, which the city of Inglewood has been pressing for. We received that form that went to all the cities in the county. And we are going to this week be busily entering information into those preapproval forms to get reimbursement. As far as business statistics, I wanted to just report that the unemployment rate in Rappahoe County was up to twelve point three percent, which is compared to the normal times in the immediate month before COVID nineteen, that was about two point three. So we went from very low unemployment, obviously, to a pretty high number. On the nonprofit assistance side, we have received a total of four applications paying out fourteen thousand dollars. And that, we've received one additional application that's been tentatively approved, waiting on a little more information. And so we'll probably be, I'm going to predict that we're going to be at about eighteen thousand of what I believe will be unreimbursed COVID nineteen nonprofit assistance. We are going to ask for reimbursement for those funds, but I'm not terribly hopeful. But as you know, for all the money that you all allocated towards the business grants, we will be reimbursed for that. So I think financially we'll still be up actually from what the budget was. And last but not least, we have received two invoices totaling about seventeen, eighteen thousand dollars from two different nonprofits that deal, serve homeless populations. And those have been from Hat Force, which does the hotel vouchers, and the other one is from Severe Weather Shelter Network. We have paid those invoices and are very confident that we'd be reimbursed for those expenses. So with that, I'll open it up. Any questions that council may have of me? Or Brad Power, who I believe is, yes, is still on the phone, our recovery manager.
Thank you for that report. Mayor Protam Sierra has a question.
Thank you, Mayor. City Manager Lewis, I have two questions. One, in terms of the unemployment numbers, is that based off the month ending in April?
I'm going to let Brad answer that. He gave us that stat.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. Yes, Mayor Protam Sierra, that is information from April in terms of the unemployment numbers.
Okay. Thank you, Director Power. And then the second question is, last week, we talked about variances and how we were hoping to get input from businesses about what else we should be asking Tri-County, Rappahoe County for area businesses. Did we receive any input? Or, and I guess secondly, do we know where we stand in terms of a variance for felt or if any guidelines have changed since the governor's last statement?
Brad, if I can start that answer and then turn it over to you for the specific. I did want to let you all know that I have reached out to the other city managers in Rappahoe County and had a pretty robust conversation over the last twenty-four hours about variance process in other communities. At this time, with the exception of Lone Tree, we have not had variances being submitted through the city from businesses to the county, but certainly. But certainly as as we have been, we're certainly ready and willing to assist. And so Brad, if you can give us an update on FELT and any other variances that you've been discussing.
Yeah, we we haven't specifically received any variance requests that are counter to any of the orders that are standing. So all the the processing that we have been doing are with the bars and restaurants are allowed under the existing orders to resume business. Some of those will receive some variances of our local codes in terms of encroachment and that type of thing. But we haven't entered into discussions with a specific business yet around a specific variance of some of the the regulations that have been proffered by the the state in Tri-County, at least yet.
Council members or Mayor Potem Sierra, I'll also add that we did reach out to FELT. I was sitting here trying to find my, the email that a staff member provided me. I'll get that information to you, though. Oh, actually, it was Dorothy. Former city deputy city manager Dorothy Hardgrove did reach out and have has also reached out to Melissa Sager with Tri-County Health on just getting us more information on the variance processes. But she did provide some information from the Tri-County website and others. And Mr. Perea, the gentleman with the billiard place, has been informed of that process, as I understand. And I believe is planning to put together some information to send the request on to the county. So we will reach out to him again. Again, Dorothy did that last Wednesday.
Okay, I appreciate that, city manager Lewis. So it does sound like there still is a need for variance or at least FELT. And so, yeah, I'd like to get, yeah, I guess I'll I'll speak to you over the course of the week to just find out how that stands. Great. Thank you so much to you both.
Thank you.
Manager Lewis, our conversation on Friday with Tri-County, no, we had two different conversations. One with the county commissioners and managers, right? And then it was later that we had the other one. Is that what your call today was following up on and figuring out if we had some joint?
That you and I had on Friday, where you thought that it would be a good idea to reach out to the other managers and I agreed. And so, but it was definitely based on the conversation that we had earlier in the day with all the commissioners, as well as all the mayors and city managers from the county. So it was a good conversation. Unfortunately, it just didn't yield a lot of information in that so far, no other jurisdictions, with the exception of Lone Tree, have been asked to assist in any way with a, an application. I stand, I'm going to correct myself and mention Aurora has also helped one of their shopping centers, but they were very quickly denied by Tri-County Health for that variance request.
Okay, great. Well, I I did get in, and I was going to put this in my mayor's time, but this probably fits better here. I got an email from the Mayor Metros Caucus just right before I came into this. And they're looking for information on any confusions or problems that we're having in getting particular alcohol and other kinds of waivers in the process. So can I just forward that to you? And you can, I mean, you would know the, you and your staff would know the down and dirty and all that, what you need and what's not worked, what is working. Looked like it was more of a feedback process they were searching for. I'll just send that on to you.
Yeah, that would be great. And if I could mention a quick word about that. Our staff has engaged via Jackie in the city clerk's office, I can tell you. She has reached out to a contact at the state who, a local business owner who's worked in state government, actually provided us with someone we were hoping to be helpful. So far, we haven't heard back from that contact, but we're going to continue to try to get what we believe is a bit of a conflict or lack of communication maybe between the governor's office and the LED liquor enforcement division. And so we are going to continue to try to get to the bottom of that, to try to assist particularly our bars and restaurants with bars in being able to have a common consumption area somewhere in town or maybe a couple of places in town and or an entertainment district. So staff has done quite a bit of work on that, but at this point, we're waiting on the state to kind of, more frankly, allow it.
Thank you. And then the governor came out with a new statement today, and I know we got it just before we came in here. I don't know if, has everybody read it before you came to the meeting tonight? I don't know if there's any kind of quick summary. It's been, there's an extension in it. And I don't know if city attorney would like to give us just a bird's eye view of what we can expect from that when you read it more detailed.
A very bird's eye view is that most of the information has not been released yet. There's a line in there that says that CDPHE is going to provide additional regulations. And if you remember Safer at Home, most of the information from Safer at Home came out of Colorado Department of Health and Environment. So we're just going to keep watching that. And and as soon as we get that new information from the Colorado Department of Health and Environment, we'll get that information out to you.
All right. Thank you. Anything else, manager Lewis?
I don't have anything else. Thank you.
As always, you're got lots to, lots to tell. It's appreciated. Next is our general discussion, agenda item thirteen and mayor's choice. A few things, I, you know, I, I don't know how you all are doing tonight, but this has been a very hard week or so for me since, and I'm sure many of us, when we're watching what's happening throughout our country and throughout our cities and the difficulties of maintaining some peaceful demonstration and yet be able to express outrage at what happened in Minneapolis, that that neighborhood is my neighborhood. I lived four blocks from where that happened. I have lots of friends and folks there that I care quite a bit about. It's been a hard thing to watch and just want to suggest that we all continue to find ways to give voice to people who need it and continue to work on anti racism for ourselves and for our city. I think we've been a fairly open and welcoming city, but we can always continue to work harder on that. I think the move tonight on the police cams, it's one of the seventy five things white people can do to help the anti racist. It was on the top, top number when I was looking at that resource that's been floating around the world today and a few days ago. But I appreciate the work that we're doing together and let's continue on that. My heart is heavy and I'll keep, appreciate your thoughts for that community and all of our communities. And the second with that is to support Denver mayor Hancock and the things that he's been having to deal with and if you know people there to give them encouragement. The mayor did invite, well, we've all been invited, the whole, the whole metro area is invited to help clean up every morning at eight AM. If any of you have time to go down and do a bit of cleanup after there's been demonstrations the night before, that's open from eight to eleven. If you want information on that, I can send it your way. I want a reminder of next week on the eighth, we have our interviews for boards and commissions. And then the tenth, which is Wednesday, we have a study session. So don't forget both of those next week. And then the last thing is just to be thankful tonight for our library, a hundred years. That's pretty cool. And thankful to be able to have something to celebrate tonight together, even though we're not quite there in person. We have seen the library expand into the world of online, so we're part of that community as well. Big thanks to all those who are helping to make that a great celebration in the next months. That's my report. So agenda item B is council members' choice. Anybody would like to begin or do you want me to just call you off? All right, we'll start with member Anderson.
Thank you, mayor. I just had one thing tonight, and I I almost jumped in and asked this during Chief Collins' excellent comments at the beginning and and just I was encouraged to hear everything that's in place with the police department. But I did have one follow up and I wanted to to put that in as a council request. I appreciated what Chief Collins said about hiring policies. And I wanted to follow up about the disciplinary policies. I'd like to to see what disciplinary policy is currently in place, what steps are needed to go through if we had a, an officer engage in some kind of misconduct, what steps would go through to discipline that officer and what it would take to terminate an officer. So that's my, my council request for the night. And thank you, mayor, for your comments. It's been a tough week for all of us and just thankful for just the great police department we do have and just encouraged to work alongside them and make sure we have the the best policies and body cams to make sure that we're protecting our citizens and our officers in the best way possible. But it's good to serve with you all and thank you.
Thank you. Member Questa.
I do not have any matters this evening. Thank you, mayor.
Thank you. Member Russell.
Thank you, mayor. The only thing that I have is a council request regarding the things that Mr. Schultz shared about perhaps addressing on the website. So could we turn that into a council request to, to see if it would be possible to address some of those things?
Great, thank you.
That's all I have. Thank you very much.
All right, Mayor Potem Sierra.
Thank you, mayor. Mayor, no, I'm in agreement with you. It has been a tough week to see what what's happened across the nation, including what's happening here close to Denver. So I I think, you know, obviously tonight we were talking about body cams and, you know, that's just one aspect of the, of the situation. The second aspect of this, how do we prevent it from, from actually needing the body cams in the first place and having the processes? So it's great to hear the chief talk about the training that we are providing in, to our department. And I know, you know, everybody's asking how you, how we can make change. And it really does start at the local level. I know that when we, you know, when city manager Lewis came on board a little less than a year ago, I know I had conversations with him in terms of what, you know, what we can be doing in terms of the police department, in terms of training, getting an understanding of that. And I know, mayor, you've been talking to him about restorative justice and taking those steps, but it really starts locally. And, you know, I just say, you know, it's just great that, you know, the city council, the seven of us here do take this seriously and are looking at different, different means to just do best of our citizens and anybody that's going through the city. So for anybody that's still out there protesting, I know that there's protesters out there doing, doing what's right, but we also know that there's a smaller segment that's also rioting. And that's affecting a lot of people, that's affecting small businesses. But really, you should be starting at the local level. So understand who your city council members are and ask them to make change. So, but no, I appreciate just our city council working together and, you know, having the conversation of what we can do to make things better. So and to chief and to the police department, you know, they've been great to us for the two years that I've been on council. They've, they've been great to me. They've been very open with me. And so I have nothing but the utmost respect for our police department. And I know that they're in a bad situation today with everything that's going on. I'm sure it's making their job a lot more difficult. So, no, I just, I just thank them for everything that they're doing here in the city. Thank you, mayor.
Thank you. Thank you, indeed. Next is member Stone.
Yeah, I just want to echo some of the Mayor Potem sentiments. You know, I have, I have quite a few friends that have been tear gassed at least once or twice this weekend alone. And it's been very trying and difficult for the communities that I interact with on a regular basis. So I just want folks to remember that these are human beings that we're talking about, that when somebody is part of something like this, they don't suddenly cease to bear their humanity and that this is going to be a traumatic thing for everybody who is down there during this and and for really everybody that they know as well. This kind of thing doesn't leave you just because you went home and washed your clothes, you know? I I am sorry. I'm proud that we're taking some steps and being proactive and that this is being championed by our police chief is is really huge to me. It lets me know that the folks that that brought him on board made a really good decision. And I do think that this is just a first step and that we need to continue looking at, you know, ways that we could ensure the safety of our citizens and accountability for our police officers. I know that ours do a really great job and I'd like to keep it that way. That's all for me.
Thank you, member Wink.
Thanks, mayor. I'll start with my exciting updates. So Cultural Arts Commission has received really exciting feedback so far. So we have seven new applications for traffic, the traffic box wrappings with art and two for creative crosswalks. And the commission will, will evaluate these applications during this week Wednesday's meeting. And then also I will be giving the council member sort of kickoff for the Chamber of Commerce and Community Development's Business Recovery Seminar Series tomorrow afternoon. Thanks, mayor, for your encouragement there. And then regarding our police again, yeah, you know, what, during one of my ride alongs a year or so ago, the police I was with said, why do you like police so much? And I said, I don't like police, but I I recognize the excellent work that our department does and I I support, you know, I support you all because of that, because I know what it can be. And I, I know the challenges that face our law enforcement officers, but and I've also recognized just what our team is like. And I feel a little selfish, but I'm so glad that I live in this city. I told the chief earlier, I'm so proud that I live in a city whose police department from the day one, you know, in absence of recent incidents even, made me feel proud. I knew a lot about what they, what their practices are and how they look at their work and their responsibilities and their training. And so I'm glad to hear Chief Collins go over some of those details again. And, and I do agree with Mr. Schultz that it would be really powerful for the citizens to, to see some of that detail, maybe in a more accessible format for them, because I think they would be super impressed and relieved to know that. So I'm really glad for this training that, that, and I'm glad that the chief shared this information with us. I'm glad that we have the police department we have. And, yeah, I'll continue to support them as, as best we can as a council to keep them strong and keep them with the resources they need to carry out their jobs and keep themselves protected. Yep. Thanks, everyone. That's it for me.
Thank you, member Wink. I, I wonder if I might make a council request if you're all okay with it and would agree. I.
No.
So policing isn't the only area that struggles with racism, right? It's our own lives and our own perspectives and our community itself. And what happened in New York City and the ramble and that situation also points out how, how we all have our own biases. And I'm wondering if there are some ways that we could explore more developing a community that continues to be open, that continues to support difference in a way that's honoring to the individual and looking for maybe programs that other cities have used. And perhaps it's like a citizen academy, maybe it's some other kind of reading groups. I'm starting a reading group on how to be an anti racist with some friends, maybe some things like that, maybe to gather and send out to us some things that we might get engaged with. So it's more of an information thing and I'm probably the one who's going to do some of it. So I'll gather things and send it my way. Would you all be interested in that kind of a document? Member Wink?
Thanks, mayor. Yeah, you know, in February, I made a, I had a pre written statement about inclusivity and, and the importance of including it in our population. And I kind of heard crickets afterward. I know it's something that the city manager and I talk about quite a bit in our one on ones, but I, I, I wholeheartedly think it's important. It doesn't matter where you are or when it is, it's critical because this stuff is ongoing. So I'm fully in support of that. And I think the city manager has some insanely tremendous and good thoughtful ideas behind this. So, yeah.
Okay, so I'll, I'll start to gather some things and I'll, more than a statement, I want to get training materials and things like that. So I guess I don't really need to ask your permission. I'm just going to tell you that I'm going to do that. And if you want it, we'll send it out there. Next is manager's report beyond COVID, right?
Yes, thank you, mayor. I was planning on doing no report, but I think actually in terms of the discussion that you all have had as a, as a council and some of your comments about the current events of our nation, I do want to mention something that has taken a bit of a backseat because of COVID nineteen, and that is the six employee task forces that we created at the end of twenty nineteen. And I want to just run through those. I haven't talked to you all much about those. I think I've mentioned them in a couple of council meetings in passing, but I want to read those off and then focus on the last one. Cross training and departmental coordination is the first. Organizational improvement, community engagement, training and development, employee recognition. And then last, but certainly not least, particularly in light of our discussion tonight, is diversity and inclusion. So really what we've been aiming for, and I want to thank Director Power, Director DeAndre for, for stepping up and leading that. In fact, I talked to. In fact, I talked to Chief Collins earlier today about the fact that he has reputation on that committee, but I'd really like for him to beat that up. And I know that there are many people in our police department that are interested in this. This is really citywide and the goal here is to foster creativity, innovation and sense of belonging among all staff by promoting understanding and acceptance of different viewpoints, opinions, thoughts and ideas among different generations, races, ethnicities, abilities slash disabilities, sexual orientation, genders and religion. And they have met, I think, on Friday. They are continuing to meet virtually now. But we have unfortunately, you know, had to put all of our task forces on hold during COVID-19. But they have begun to start meeting again. And, you know, our plan, our outcome from this is really not only promote understanding and awareness of the value of diversity, but also to improve recruitment and retention of diverse employees. And so again, I just want to call attention to that effort. It is ongoing. Frankly, I think, you know, the events of the last two weeks have really emphasized the importance of our focus and effort in this area and we will continue to do that. So no other report beyond that, mayor.
Thank you, manager Lewis. Next is our city attorney's report. Allison McKinney Brown?
I have no reports this evening.
All right. Thank you and have a good evening. Let's take a roll call vote to adjourn the meeting.
Member Anderson?
Aye.
Member Questa?
Aye.
Member Russell?
Aye.
Mayor Potem Sierra?
Aye, sorry.
Member Stone?
Aye.
Member Wink?
I think she may have gotten disconnected, actually.
She may have, she may have thought I adjourned us already.
Mayor Olson?
Hi.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. Have a safe night.
Have a good evening, everyone.